Brian's always here, he's he lives so close like I do.
I think there's a difference between commissioner and.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Commissioner fired?
No, no.
Okay, cool. He must be coming from Oregon.
Is he is he just he's coming from Oregon?
Well, I don't know, if you're coming from north then you've got a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
Has any of the commission been uh lived here more than twenty years during uh college?
Yes, I have.
Uh huh.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I've been pretty close to it.
Are you interested in joining the planning commission?
No, not necessarily.
Oh. There's hope really in, you know, and you have five points, right?
Yes. I I I thank you for that. Maybe somebody else would be interested. I actually uh live in Clark County. For a few years on my life.
Got it.
Yeah, this is this is off position?
Uh it is off. Now you're off, yeah. It's backwards to me, I always think off is out.
I know, you would think that it would be the other way around.
Yeah.
Yep. So uh, I'm doing some.
Okay.
This will start soon.
Yeah.
About two weeks.
Uh yeah, the library should be open soon.
I know, my daughter's so excited. I know that we're gonna we're gonna take a field trip there, which is exciting.
Yeah.
Traffic is terrible.
Yeah.
Did you come from New York?
Yeah.
All right, I apologize for the delay. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Woodland Washington Planning Commission to order at seven oh four on August fifteenth, twenty twenty four. The role of the planning commission is to hold workshops to review and make recommendations to the city council on all manner of policy and legislative activities. In some cases, we act as a quasi judicial board for land use cases which can then be appealed to either the council, the hearing's examiner, or a court. I don't believe we will be doing that this evening. Alyssa, would you call roll?
Tell Jensen.
I'm here.
Sharon Watt.
Here.
Shawna Gothorn. Robin's Robin Zorch.
Here.
Brian Mattson.
All right, thanks. Uh first up on the agenda, we have citizen communications for items that are not on the agenda. I've got three names here, um and I think could we'll just start with Carmen De Leon. All right, fantastic. Come on up, tell us your name for the record and uh uh I'm gonna go five minutes if that's suits everybody. You do not, just shoot. Okay. Don't worry, I'll give you some extra time.
And we're on.
There you go.
All right, thanks for bearing with you.
It's red, put on.
Yeah.
It's on? Oh, okay, now it's on, now we're happening here. Okay, my name is Carmen De Leon. Um originally, I'm Sacramento, California, transplanted up here to uh Clark County, Washington, um in nineteen eighty. When I moved into Clark County, there was forty thousand people. And I used to think, wow, what a hometown, you know, just forty thou- cause I was from Sacramento, you know? So it was like hometown Vancouver, but Portland was this big city where all the drug dealers and all the bad shady stuff went on, so we were happy here in Vancouver. Only thing is, I know this is a planning committee, so I know you guys need to understand the Vancouver plans on becoming the second biggest city, second only to Seattle. We have now two hundred thousand people. They want to encourage corporations to come buy land, build things, and bring us to five hundred thousand people in Vancouver. This is from the city planning com- the 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 uh city managers and the mayors, cause we go there as, you know, we're, I guess, political nerds, we're always going to these city council things. And that's why when I heard about the three hundred acres out here that they wanna develop, that they wanna clear cut uh three hundred and forty is it acres? Clear cut it because they want the rock underneath. And that is, I think, part of all the county out Yakult and all this county out here, so that's three hundred, three three hundred and forty thousand acres. And then there's five thousand houses that they wanna build in Clark County. And um then wha- what I'm saying is what they did with um like Hazel Dell is they bought Hazel Dell Incorporated, now they're building, building, building. We just saw them demolition a historic building last week, uh the whole block, and then it came out on on their so-called tell the public about it on Facebook, cause there's only twenty thousand people on Facebook, but a population of two hundred thousand. But to them, they informed. And it says that they're gonna put up two hundred and ninety unit apartment in downtown Vancouver. So I'm just saying, so if you guys are planning on expanding with us or not, cause they have every intention of building railroads right through this area, this county, all this county is in jeopardy too. And um like I said, they want, like he said, we want the voter power, because you know, it's it's Seattle Tacoma Olympia Vancouver fourth. They wanted to go Seattle Vancouver Tacoma Olympia, because like the guy said, this new city manager said, we want the voting power. And with the second biggest voting population, then we command the state, so we want Vancouver to be five hundred thousand people. So that's more than double what we got. And if you don't think it will affect you, it will. I guarantee you that. But that, I don't know how much time I have. Um I did wanna point out to this, um it says a marijuana uh store thing. And I just wanna point out that um in case you haven't noticed, that California legalized, Oregon legalized, Washington, and then they're like a chain reaction, domino effect, everybody started doing it. Why? They liked the revenue and crime did go down. Uh it helps women with menstrual cramps, PTSD, and all kinds of pain. It's it's not just recreational, it really is for healing purposes. If anybody ever read Genesis three, I give you every herb bearing seed. Well, those herbs bear seeds. And they heal without pumping money into the pharmaceutical industry. So I strongly support any any marijuana being paid here, being bought or whatever, whatever it is, I don't know the whole situation. Like I said, I'm just a visitor. Uh don't kill the messenger. I just want you guys to know that Vancouver is planning on expand, 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 and yeah, you guys are gonna expand with them, you can count on it. Cause if you think this I five jam is something, wait till we get as big as Tacoma. Actually, bigger than Tacoma. So I think I covered it. I mean, I just wanted to say that marijuana is actually a good deal, crime rates have dropped, et cetera, et cetera. The the states love the money, that's why every state is starting going, oh, you made how many billions? Oh, okay, we want marijuana too. So that's been going on around the country, New York, everywhere. I think even Texas is starting to say, okay, we want tax money too. But lastly, I I got a little bit of time. Um we've got millions and millions of of illegals now into this country. And I'm sorry to say, where are you guys gonna put them? Because it's been three years of an open border. And I'm I'm very for, um I have the scars of being attacked by a illegal immigrant who came and disabled me. And I'm very supportive of getting them out of here. I just gotta say that because when the towns expand, other people are gonna expand. I hope you're not a, what do you call it, one of those cities that sanctuary cities, because guess what, you're gonna be overloaded too. You know, it's just, it's coming if things don't change. And if he said about legislators, maybe we can bring some laws to deport people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for comments. Next up, we have Kimberly Goen Elbin.
Hey, Sal, I don't think your camera's on for people online.
Yeah, it is not. Thank you, Todd. I did, yes. Um just a quick note, uh this portion is for communications for items that are not on the agenda, so if you wanna talk about things that are on the agenda, please save that for later in the meeting. Uh let's know who you are and where you're from.
Oh, thank you.
Kimberly Goheen Elbin. I'm a life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. To mention about the illegal immigrants, um how many people know that they are here already? I know they're in Clark County, you know they're here. So in my belief, God created us all. But he also, when we turned away from him, said, well, you have a government then, and we decided that we're gonna finally have a good government. A couple hundred years ago, we figured out, maybe get the constitution. Of course, we're not in heaven yet, it's not perfect. But the present person um claiming to be president of the United States and now a person that claims to be vice president um is going to take over. It, we are in very evil, bad times where our government is taking us over. They do not believe that we are the government, it is our government. Uh that's in scripture also. We need to stand up like our forefathers warned us to do, and that is to assemble when a government becomes dangerous. We are to abolish it, actually. It's in the constitution and the bill of rights. Down there, um Mello and I have been um talking at the Clark County Council. They are effectively taking our First Amendment rights away, as did Vancouver two years ago. I was born in Vancouver. When I found out four years ago, they were a United Nations member. They are one of four hundred cities, Portland, Seattle, Olympia, Eugene, Bellingham, all of them. Four hundred cities across America are undermining us through the America Rescrew Plan, that's what I call it. It's Biden's using our hard earned tax dollars and calling it an America, um I call it the American Rescrew Plan. We're getting it three times over, believe it or not, during a recession with inflation. You know, they're building houses with expensive lumber, and uh if they don't use it, they're gonna lose it. So my duty has been to try to wake up Clark County citizens to this agenda. It's called Agenda twenty one twenty thirty, you can look it up. These cities are undermining us. They are sanctuary cities, they're the ones that defunded their police so they can have chaos and death and riots. And if you don't understand that this is a spiritual battle and they do not care about us, we the people. We have to stand up now. I'm telling you right now, the plan of evil people, they don't quit until you quit them. And that's what we have to do, we must stand in assembly. I'm asking Kowlets to do so. I'll be attending their um uh city council meeting here soon also. The mayor of Vancouver is a United Nations member. It's called the I C L E I. It does not follow the constitution. And she will have light rail, even though Clark County's voted it down three times, they don't give a damn. They've spent millions of dollars already on the uh light rail plan and map and everything, millions of hard earned tax dollars, and they're just gonna drive over people. She holds in secret that there's a uh called a bridge shelter, it's not under the bridge, but it's a bridge between, I don't know how much money from here to over there. But she won't tell the people where it's at because they might be uh upset about it. So she's holding secrets. When you are part of a Marxist community uh government, they are going to take us over. They want to lock us down. According to Clark County Chair Medvaji, there will be another plandemic. And they will lock us down, they'll do everything they can to carry out this agenda that you can see is happening. We cannot have scales over our eyes, we have to stand. I ask people to listen to one zero one point one FM radio while you're in the car. That's one zero one point one and eight sixty AM. They're very informative and you can discern for yourself. Um I spoke about the light rail. Um I also wanted to mention, uh I won't mention what's on the agenda tonight. Uh there is a three strand government. We the people are the boss, we elect a council. Those councils are us and and the council, that's supposed to be us now, right, the people? Then they hire city managers and county managers. Those are the people that are bringing in, and even through maybe planning commissions, a United Nations agenda to weaken us. And they're gonna house illegal immigrants at your tax dollar. Here we are now, it's supposed to be two against one, it's actually two on this side against we the people. We do not have control over our government any longer. If you don't see it, you you need to start paying attention and and understand that uh what I tell people is put on the armor of God, fear not.
Really?
We cannot fear. So God is always good, let's make America godly again.
All right. Next up, we have Donna Butler. Come on up, tell us who you are, where you're from.
Yes, Donna Butler. I'd just like to thank you. Um I was at your last commission meeting and it was pretty confusing. Everyone's trying to figure out what's what, but you got it figured out and you found a way to make a path forward for a business that was operating noncompliant for years. And um I just appreciate that you did that for a business that wasn't causing any problem and um there was support for it, so I appreciate that very much.
All right, thanks, Donna. Um all right, I'm gonna check with any, we've got a couple folks online, wanna make sure none of them have communications for items not on the agenda. Okay, all right. Okay, not seeing any signals there. Um why don't you come on up then, we got time for that. Tell us your name, where you're from, and.
Okay, my name is Brittany Michelson. I'm actually here on behalf of my grandmother, who is eighty five. She was born and raised here, we're sex- six generations deep. I believe she wrote this originally for the actual city council, so I would like to leave this for you guys and for the city council, but I'm just going to read what she wrote. Um, let's see. Her name is Darlene Moose, and it is proposal for the transformation of the current library building into a historical museum. As a lifelong resident of this town and a descendant of the Insell and Detlaw families, I am deeply invested in the pres- preservation of our community's history. With the impending opening of our new library, I propose that the current library building, an architectural and historical landmark, be repurposed as a historical museum. The case for a new historical museum, our existing historical museum, while appreciated for its contribution, is severely limited by its size and mostly its location. Housed in a small older home, it is tucked away behind the city buildings and lacks the visibility and space necessary to showcase our town's rich heritage effectively. The current library building, on the other hand, is a centrally located, easy accessible structure with ample space, making it an ideal location for a museum. Its historical significance adds an additional layer of appropriateness to its proposed transformation, and from what we have gathered, the city owns it. Benefits of repurposing the library building. Number one, increased visibility and accessibility. The current library building's prominent location and proximity to churches, schools, and ample parking would make the historical museum more accessible to residents and visitors alike. Number two, expanded space for exhibits and collections. The building's spacious interior would allow for the display of a wider range of artifacts, photographs, and historical documents, creating a more comprehensive and engaging museum experience. Number three, community revitalization. The establishment of a vibrant historical museum in the heart of our town would serve as a catalyst for community revitalization, attracting visitors, and fostering a sense of pride in our shared heritage. And four, educational opportunities. A well-curated museum could offer educational programs and resources for students, researchers, and history enthusiasts contributing to a deeper understanding of our town's personal past. Addressing potential obstacles. I am aware of the concerns raised regarding potential cost of renovations and the need for accessibility accommodations. However, I am confident that with the support and enthusiasm of our community, we can find creative solutions to these challenges. We can explore grant opportunities, fundraising initiatives, and volunteer efforts to ensure the success of this project. In conclusion, I urge you to consider this proposal as an opportunity to honor our town's history, revitalize our community, and create a lasting legacy for future generations. By transforming the current library building into a historical museum, we can create a vibrant and engaging space that celebrates our shared past and inspires a brighter future. Darlene Moose. I do know that there is a couple of people in particular, and I'm speaking on my own behalf now, um that do not like this idea. And it's because of a new HVAC system that was put into the current building. I have explored grants, I've looked at things, there is no reason why we couldn't do the same thing for the library to preserve, cause I know it has something to do with preserving the paperwork and everything. So there are opportunities there. Um I'm not sure if this was the right place to do this, cause I'm brand new to this, but I just thank you all for taking the time to listen and maybe think about this idea.
All right, thank you, Brittany and Darlene. Um yeah, it's probably not up to us, but that doesn't mean it's not a good spot to spread the word. Yep, just fine. All right, um wanna make sure no one else has, give you a last chance to for communicate on items not on the agenda before we move on. Folks online. Okay, let's go ahead with approval of the agenda.
I uh move we approve the agenda as.
As written.
Agree.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve our agenda as written. Um anyone opposed? All right, motion carries, moving on to approve the minutes of our July eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Okay, I move that we approve the July minutes as written.
Agreed.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve as written our July eighteenth, twenty twenty four minutes. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries, excellent work. Next up, we have maybe what we're all here for. Um we have a public hearing on zoning text amendment WL D twenty four dash zero zero one marijuana retail sales. Or is this, I get these confused, item twenty four dash zero zero four six. So opening the public record for this public hearing. Uh ask if any member of the commission has a conflict of interest or ex parte communication to declare.
No.
No.
Uh neither do I, fantastic. Um do we have a staff presentation? Thanks so much.
Thank you. My name is Travis Goddard, I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Woodland. And um I will be doing the presentation for this. This will be familiar for several of you because you were here on the planning commission when this came previously. So the application before you tonight is is Paradigm LLC applied for a zoning text amendment, asking the city to reconsider its prohibition. And they would like the city to add retail sales of marijuana to the list of permitted uses in the highway commercial zone. So previously, previous had considered multiple zones, and um this time they've narrowed it to the highway commercial zone for consideration. So uh Woodland Municipal Code seventeen point five zero is our recreational marijuana code, and it was adopted in twenty fourteen. Retail sales are prohibited, although production and processing are permitted in industrial zones west of the train tracks. So the city has considered retail sales code amendments previously in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty two, and twenty twenty three. In all of those cases, the council declined. And recently, the council considered a resolution, Resolution seven eighty eight, to place the uh to place retail sales on the ballot as a measure for um public vote in the November twenty twenty four ballot, and that was declined. So what you have before you tonight is a a draft ordinance. It's identified in the packet as XXXX, cause we haven't assigned a number for it. We've assigned a number twice before and it was declined. So um this time I didn't assign a number, um depending what the council wants to do. And for any zone where the amendment is approved, the ordinance would strike marijuana retailer from the prohibited list and add it to the permitted list. There is no staff recommendation, cause this is a policy, and the planning commission um recommendation last time was to approve. And that's the twenty twenty three version. So the draft ordinance language before you is simply the twenty twenty three version with a new date on it. And um this time it's only for the highway commercial district, but it's the same basic ordinance that you went before. And attached to that is a map that would go into effect. This essentially identifies the prohibited zones where marijuana retail could not occur, and that's based on the R C W. So the area in pink on this map is highway commercial zoning where it would be permitted if the zone were to change. Any questions about this?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis, appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have. Come on up. Tell us where you'd like to.
Uh just asking to be recommended again for the foretime to be approved into the C two zone. People wanna say it's about kids, this and that, but it actually comes down to the parent of those kids to teach their kids right and wrong. We paid eighty thousand dollars a year in sales tax, not counting the revenue from people shopping elsewhere when they were in town. People can make up stories about little kids that are not true and try to bring their religion into it, but that has nothing to do with being the age of twenty one and legal to buy marijuana. You have to be twenty one to buy them all. So if kids get it, that's not they're not buying it in the store themselves. It's other adults buying it for kids, or parents giving it to the kids. There's still more kids getting busted for alcohol in this town than.
Would you, just for the record, would you tell us your name?
John Storey.
Thanks so much, Sean. Okay. Any questions for Afghani before we move on?
No.
No? All right. Moving right along then. It's time for public testimony. We'll start with folks in support, and again, we'll have a five-minute timeline on that. All right. Who's up? All right. Come on up. Tell us your name.
My name is Carmen DeLeone, and I know already, I didn't know we had a different time to talk about it, because I thought it was on a time limit, but I'm just going to say, if they're worried about kids, you know, I mean, it really is up to the parents, and a lot of parents aren't being held accountable for what, I've seen parents give their kids cigarettes and give them pot. So, I kind of agree with him that, you know, it's up to the parents to control their kids, but I haven't seen a lot of states turn down money. So, I mean, if the city don't want money, fine, you know, but if they want to make some money, they're going to bring in everybody off I-5 stopping to buy some pot and move on, because it actually is kind of proven that pot chills people out, and alcohol causes more accidents and deaths than pot ever did. So, like I all reiterate, crime went down when pot was available to people, and it will cure things. I myself was supposed to have surgery, and bottom line is, I didn't, because pot helped me with the pain, it helped me with eating, it helped me with a lot of, it healed me. It's really a healing herb. So, if you don't like healing things, then don't accept it, but really, it's not just a recreational thing, it really is medicine for thousands and thousands, if not millions of people across the nation. It's cured cancer, and it really helps some of us with PTSD, so I mean, if you want a more chill population, you ought to let this person do whatever he's going to do. And when kids have difficulties and problems, you really need to look at the parents and not the person, some other stranger involved, because ultimately, we're in charge of our kids. We're in charge of who we raise and what we do with them, and you can't blame somebody else, because your kid got, you know, hold a Playboy, you know, why weren't you parenting? You know, I mean, you got to watch your own kids. So, I understand that, you know? I'm just saying, I mean, it's known to chill people out, it's known to, you know, heal people, so it brings in money. I don't see a big problem with it. Like I said, throughout the country, it's been decriminalized, 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 because they like the money and they like the lower crime rate, and I think, given the situation right here along I-5, you're going to have a lot of people stopping and bringing money into the community, buying gas, buying whatever, and it gives them all more reason to stop here and not just keep driving, you know? They, oh, I can, I can pick some pot up on the way, and then they will. You know, it does bring in people. So, and even people from out in the boonies that would be out in the boonies, otherwise they'll drive into town to get it, you know, where it's legal. But I'm just saying, I support it, obviously.
All right. Thanks, Carmen. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Okay. Tell us your name.
Kimberly Gohean Albin from Clark County. So, I've been following this for a couple of years now, and I am for the rezoning. I use parts of the marijuana for pain, and I know that it is exceptional. It doesn't get me high or anything. I use an oil or whatever, chewables and, you know, but it definitely helps with the pain. It does. Wanted to mention a couple of things, so just bear with me here. You know, we're, I don't drink alcohol, but I think alcohol is the number one drug in the world, actually. Now with the open border and illegal immigration and China making fentanyl available, it's become probably first now, who knows?
Please keep your comments germane to the topic.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I don't, I, it's, I don't believe that marijuana is a gateway to anything. I think it's its own entity, just like alcohol or cigarettes. Today, I'm attempting my first day to quitting tobacco. So, bear with me and thank you. I do agree with this rezoning. I hope that the city prospers. Watch over your children, and don't abuse anything, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right. Any more, anyone else want to speak in support of? All right. Come on up. Tell us your name.
My name is Still Donna Butler. So, I appreciate you putting this forward to city council again. You're demonstrating a respect for our constitution and founding fathers who built our country on personal rights and individual privacy. This is a legal path forward for 20After4. This issue is no different than the Woodland Shores RV Park. To not offer the same opportunity to 20After4 appears to be a matter of prejudice justified by personal morals. Morals cannot be legislated, because whose morals are you going to legislate? So, where does your prejudice or bias start and where does it stop? To not do the same for 20After4 could be an arbitrary and capricious matter if it were to be looked at by attorneys. So, I just think those are things to consider in this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. All right. Come on. Tell us your name.
My name is Jennifer Deluse. I never imagined myself being some kind of champion for cannabis or marijuana anywhere, but the misinformation and reefer madness attitude that I've seen from the council and other people around cannabis has really made me decide to speak up. In 2012, when marijuana was legalized, the discrimination between medical people and recreational usage stopped. There is no discrimination. So, now you have medical people who have autoimmune diseases, like I do, and people with cancer, and people that choose not to use Big Pharma but would rather use cannabis. You have those people and recreational users going to the same shop. There is no difference anymore. And I feel like a lot of the council, they picture people going in and buying a big old bag of buds, right? And coming out, and they're just a bunch of potheads looking like Cheech and Chong. What they don't know is the medicinal side of marijuana that comes in tinctures, comes in balms, and lotions, and sprays, topicals, and, I mean, I can go on and on about edibles and THC, or not THC, but CBD that doesn't have any THC in it, but you can't, the ones that are at the little, like, cloudhouse and, those don't count. Those are phony. To get a good CBD, you really have to get it from a dispensary, and I don't think that people should have to jump in their car and get on the freeway to get it. My car just broke down. I don't think I should have to try to get a ride to go get a balm for my elbow or for my knees or for whatever's hurting me. I think the people of Woodland at least deserve the chance to get it here. I did go to John's shop. I got my dragon balm there, and I've, I've never seen kids in the car, ever. Anybody that I ever seen in that shop looked like every single person in this room right now. Everybody. So, that's, that's the main reason I wanted to speak up, because I don't like the picture that council has painted about people that use medicinal marijuana. So, there's my opinion.
Thank you. Jennifer.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much.
And my, my name is Brittany Michelson. To further expand upon what Jennifer was saying and absolutely agree with her, that if you watch an everyday pot shop, it is going to be all kinds of walks of life. I don't personally partake in using cannabis, but the absolute proof is in the pudding when it comes to topicals, things like that from medicinal nature. She's right, it is not the same that you get it from a vape shop, everything is completely different. So, I absolutely approve this rezoning. There is a massive responsibility as a public servant to separate church and state. To sit up the county town is completely out of line. We have seen on the Washington, Woodland/Washington Community Chat, there are only like five people that I've seen that are opposed to it, and then the likes and the comments for approve this store, approve this ability to open a store, it's there. The town wants it, and they have the right to have it. I really believe, after watching old videos, reading comments from former council members, et cetera, there is an absolute personal attack on the owner of 20After4, because he went ahead and did it anyway. And the truth is, was it correct? Maybe not. Can I blame him? Not really. And you guys are dictating for the entire town, and that is completely out of line, in my opinion. The argument about sales revenue is one thing, but when you have several bars, there are several restaurants in Woodland, they, a lot of them have lounges, there are a couple of bars, you can go in a Safeway and I could go buy alcohol right now. The fact that you have those opportunities, but you can't go buy cannabis is asinine, and the fact that it is even up for debate, we are on the wrong side of how progress here. So, I really appreciate you guys are having this meeting and letting everyone speak about it. I will be at the next council meeting. They probably will not be a big fan of me. I appreciate you guys doing this, and I think that I speak for a large majority of Woodland when I say that we would like to see a cannabis store in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Anyone else in support of the amendment? All right. Not seeing any out here. I'm going to check with folks online. Anyone online want to speak in favor of the zoning amendment? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Next up, we have those who are neutral to the proposal. Is anyone neutral? I'm guessing this will be the fastest section. Okay. Online, anyone neutral want to speak about the zoning text amendment? Does not appear to. Okay. Moving on then to those in opposition. Who wants to come up first? Come on up. Tell us your name. Got five minutes.
My name is Darling Johnson, and I'm actually a resident of Clark County too, but I own a business. He must be high. Yeah, he must be high. Anyway.
Okay. Apologies, everyone. Darlene?
I own Woodland, excuse me, Woodland Truck Line, and we have truck drivers, and so because we have truck drivers, we test for it. It is not the safe drug that, when it was put on the ballot, it was compared to alcohol. There is no comparison to alcohol. Alcohol actually affects a different part of the brain, and marijuana affects the thinking part. Also, there's a lot of studies that if a male 21 to 25 actually uses much marijuana, the likelihood of him having schizophrenia is really increased. There's other medical issues also. I think anyone that really needs it for medical use can get it through a prescription. I know that might cost a little bit more, but I think that you'd get better quality there, even though you do have different, maybe it's different quality in that, in his shop than it is in others', but it wouldn't be the same quality that you have medical. That, and to do this for money is just so unacceptable, which has nothing to do with religion. It has to do with whether you feel like putting something in your town that could possibly have these effects. Also, I always wonder why they make all these little things that look like gummy bears and stuff if it isn't to enhance the kids, the kids to take it. This happened with cigarettes, where they had all these flavors that made kids want to have it, and that, that ended up getting changed. Well, I heard that it was getting changed. Well, it should be changed. And it's just really unacceptable to have that brought into our town. If people want it, it's pretty close to get it, and, and the detrimental effects, and all you got to do is have to study it. I didn't want to study these issues, but because we test, we are, we are required to study all the issues affecting. It's also very hard to tell if, if you're on marijuana, and I don't know where the lady said crime has gone down, because every newspaper, every state, the crime has gone up. Now, maybe it's gone down in the area of marijuana, because they've legalized it, but actual crime has gone up, and it's, it's not something that we need to have in our town. It, and the, one of the things I forgot to say is that because it affects the thinking part of the brain, it's very difficult to determine whether somebody is high on it. But in reality, if you go online now, the number of traffic accidents, fatality traffic accidents, is getting broken down between marijuana and alcohol, and marijuana is rapidly catching up. And, yeah, 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 and if you're thinking that it can drive when you're on marijuana, you're wrong, and that is definitely proved.
All right. Thank you, Darlene.
I'm actually a Woodland, in Woodland, but...
Who's up next?
Yeah.
Please, please. All right. Folks?
I was just making sure if you said my town is...
Okay. I would ask everyone in the gallery here to, referring from talking to each other, please wait for the turn we've given everyone and address your comments to the commission, please. All right. Who's up next? Those in opposition to the zoning text amendment? All right. Looks like not seeing any more. If you're in person, anyone in the meeting online want to give comment? All right. I'm not seeing any there either. I want to give the last chance for anybody in support, neutral opposition. This is, this is, the most important part of these meetings is our public testimony, so I want to make sure everybody who wants to speak has an opportunity to. All right. Do we have a staff response to...
I didn't identify any issues that I needed to address unless you have a questions for me.
Okay. Any questions for staff before we... Okay.
Well, I was just, I was just wondering if this, if this passed, then 20After4 would stay at the same location, probably?
If the city council approved.
Yeah, right. If, if, right.
You guys have proposed three times, four of them do approve it, and they say you guys are all dead wrong.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be on the council, so...
Well, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask something? Just like, two sentences, get back.
Yeah. Come on up, though. I don't think you used your whole time.
I don't, I'm not trying to take a lot of time. It's just something that I want to, because you guys are on the planning board, and I don't know if a lot of people know. There is a large amount of red tape that you have to go through to get a 502 license. I know from experience...
I don't, I'm not trying to take a lot of time. It's just something that I wanna reiterate because you guys are planning board and I don't know if a lot of people know. Um, there is a, a large amount of red tape that you have to go through to get a 502 license. I know from experience, my father owns a cannabis farm. Um, he is a lifelong Woodland resident as well. His farm is in Clark County. Just to have, and his is a grow, but the amount of red tape you have to go through to get this license is extremely hard. That's for a grow. For a retail space, it's even harder. And there is so much you have to do. And I just want to kind of like reiterate in defense of whoever has a retail license, that it's not, you can't just willy-nilly go, I mean, obviously, anywhere. But for the state's perspective too, there's so much you have to go through. So it would be really beneficial if you guys did a lot, if the council, you know, after this, if this is approved, let it happen because these are people that have invested a lot of time and money into getting these licenses and getting approved for it. It's very hard to get approved for. So that's all I wanted to throw out there.
All right. Thanks so much, Brittany. Okay, um, anyone else before we move on? All right, next up, we have the applicant's final rebuttal. John, if you wanna say anything else?
No, not at all.
All right, in that case, we will close public testimony and commission, uh, move on to commission deliberation. So. Any deliberation? I think we've, we've been here before.
We've done this before, yeah.
Okay. Um. In that case, um, for us to vote, we need a motion.
Okay. Okay.
Apologies.
So this is sending it to the council. Right, right. Okay. So I move that we recommend to the city council that they approve zoning tax amendment WL D twenty-four zero zero one.
Okay.
No. My answer is no.
Okay, we need, uh, we need, before we can vote on it, we need to second it.
Okay, I second it. Sorry for that.
Okay.
I'm just Brian doing that, everybody.
All right, um, motion has been made and seconded. Um, just check to see if there's any discussion.
No.
I don't think so. Okay. In that case, this will be a poll of vote.
Shauna Cawthorn?
No.
Sharon Watts?
Yes.
Tell Jensen.
Uh, yes, all right. So motion carried, um. And so I'm gonna close the public hearing for this item. Before I move on, um, I just wanna thank everybody again for participating in the process. This is, this is how it works, um, and even though we've been here before, um, you know, it's important to, to keep. I'm tripping over my words, so I'm just gonna move on. Uh, thanks, everyone, for, uh, participating. Yeah. Next up, we have a discussion workshop. Uh, this is for sign regulation update. We have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Again, my name is Travis Goddard. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Woodland. And, um, the workshop that we're gonna be discussing today is essentially, um, I wanted you to have this ordinance and information ahead of the hearings that we're going to be holding for the next two planning commission meetings. Wanted you to get a chance to look at it. The copy that is attached to the staff report tonight does include my initial markup and then review by the associate planner who's to my right, Maylene Garcia de Board. And, um, also, uh, the city permit tech and code enforcement, Alyssa Brentano, who's to my left. Um, and so you can read through the comments and questions as we go back and forth on those. But we wanted you to see what the staff's discussion was so that you would understand where the comments are coming from. So the reason why we're here before you tonight is because, um, we need to update our ordinance because of the Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona, U.S. Supreme Court decision, which was issued in 2015. So this has been, um, boiling for many years. Even before I got here, this was an issue. And there has been some legis, or some court cases that have helped clarify the issues. Um, the court held that a sign code that treats various categories of sign differently based on the information they convey, that it violates free speech under the First Amendment. And specifically that temporary signs that were treated differently based on their content. And that had a significant impact on all signage ordinances across the entire country. And when they're talking about, or what they're talking about specifically is content and that is the information that is made available or material dealt with. So I'll get a little more detail into that, but, um, that's important that we understand what we mean by content when we're talking about First Amendment rights. So information made available is like information on a webpage. It's, all the information is available to be read. As opposed to material dealt with is more like a table of contents. It doesn't necessarily provide the information, but it tells you the information that is coming. So those are both considered content. And signs cannot be regulated based on the information that they, that they convey. So for example, political signs, ideological signs, directional signs, those are all information or content that is being conveyed by the sign. Now, what can be regulated? Location, number, dimensional standards, the types and material. Um, so those are all physical manifestations of a sign. So I'll dive into each one of these. So for example, a location is, is that sign on a wall? Is it in a window? Is it on a roof? Is it in the right of way or is it blocking sight distance? Those are all physical characteristics that you can look at and measure without having to see what is on the sign itself. Um, onsite, offsite. So I've set that aside because we are gonna discuss that a little more later. But the next thing we can regulate is the number of signs. So one sign, two signs, one on a building, one on a roof, signs up in a window or half the window, the full window, and mix of sign types. Those are all things that we can count, the number of signs. Dimensional standards, for example, how high is it? Can it be ten feet or fifty feet? The width, how wide can it be, the area? Is it measured on the front and the back? Is it thirty-two square feet or is it ten square feet? Those are all physical dimensions that you can measure. And then types of material. So whether it's got lights that are flashing, laser beams, LED screens. Mo, uh, motion, like rotating or turning signs or actua, actuated like a canoeer that's paddling. The, the movement of the paddle would be considered motion. And then there's the physical construction materials like wood, metal, cardboard, plastic, and canvas or cloth, um, with or without a rigid frame. So that is covered by the ordinance. Now, Woodland's municipal code is seventeen point five two for signs and it was originally adopted in nineteen seventy-nine. It had some adopted in two thousand and four, but that was significantly, um, prior to the Reed and Gilbert decision in twenty fifteen. So in, uh, twenty twenty-two, the U.S. Supreme Court also narrowed the decision that was in Reed versus Gilbert. And specifically what they talked about in this case is who is the speaker and what is the speaker saying requires content judgment. So that is a problem or that is illegal under Reed versus Gilbert. So who is speaking and what are they saying? But what can be regulated is who is the speaker and where are they saying it? So it's not about content, it's about location. So this gets to the onsite, offsite issue that I had flagged before. And then in twenty seventeen, there was a Ninth Circuit Court, um, decision that clarified Reed versus Gilbert. And it talks about imposing duration limits on special event signs and that can be considered content neutral. So even though you need to read the sign to see what it says, if it's associated with the special event, um, you can regulate that. And so we'll get into that. So for example, um, in this case, if we talk about Planters Day, if there is a special event permit to hold Planters Day, we can approve them putting up all kinds of signs for the special event. They can put up ten signs. We can't tell them what's on the sign, but we can tell them where to put it and how long it can be up because Planters Day is for a specific special event and we can approve permits with that permit, but not as sign permits. So, um, this slide is to talk about reinventing the wheel because a lot of jurisdictions have tracked, have tackled this, some back twenty sixteen. And but, and they're a small town, much smaller than we are. But to give you an idea that jurisdictions have been wrestling with updating their codes for years. And so in some sense, the fact that we didn't rush right away to do ours, it's okay. It just requires staff to interpret our existing code, what we can and can't apply. And we need to fix that. So in this case, staff is opting not to make major revisions. We are not looking to make significant policy changes. We're only looking at making minor revisions and stuff like format changes using tables. So hopefully you'll get the chance to weigh in on that. And the proposed changes really that we're gonna be talking about over the next couple of months are removing all content-related regulations, that has to be done, and cleaning up the formatting. So, um, our, our code says in some case, the building official or the, the public, um, or, public works director and community development director, building official. Throughout our code, this is pretty consistent with other code amendments we've done. We're also looking at grammar and cross-reference checks. We're also trying to clarify some definitions, adding some definitions specifically. But definitions aren't used to regulate, they're only used to, um, clarify and define. And we're also proposing to use tables where they add clarity. And so, like I said, no changes are proposed to either the size or the number of signs that are currently in the regulations. But these are sign conversations that I've essentially identified that I think we need to have. So, um, tables versus text, sign definitions, temporary signs, um, signs not visible from offsite or internal signs versus, um, external signs. And then, um, in the text that is attached to the staff report, there are areas that are yellow highlights and those are specific sections in the staff report that I think warrant a discussion or need some clarification because they are policy-related stuff. And those hearings are scheduled, um, on the second Thursday of the next two months. So that is September twelfth and October tenth. Normally, the planning commission is held on the third Thursday, but due to scheduling, um, conflicts, we're moving to the second Thursday for the next couple of months. So, um, any questions? Um, I, I am, uh, I do have a couple quick directions that I would like to get from you today depending upon that discussion and potentially whether you wanna divide up the workload in the next meeting if you've had a chance to look at it and stuff I want you to let me know that you want me to focus on.
All right, any, yeah, any directions for staff going forward?
So this slide does reflect the, the quick directions that I think hopefully you could maybe give me today if you're comfortable. So for example, um, use the, use tables instead of paragraphs. Um, because what I would theoretically like to do is if you're comfortable with that, just accept those changes and kind of simplify the code that gets presented to you. Because right now, it's kind of a twenty-six-page track change mess. And if I could eliminate some of that confusion, it would help you narrow, narrow gradually. So I could bring that code up and talk about a sample of the, the tables if you'd like me to.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be helpful. And I, I, I think kinda maybe, um, track changes and comments do seem useful. It can be a lot. So you're thinking of just, uh, instead of having, so you wouldn't have the strike through, you would just, that would be gone?
So here, for example, is a section on the highway commercial zoning. And in the paragraph above, what you see is the old code. It says the allowable area. You have a primary frontage measurement, which says you can get one square foot of sign per foot of building or per, per foot of lot. Um, and then later on in that paragraph, it says your secondary frontage is calculated at half a square foot. And so you have that, that big paragraph up, up above, which defines in this case, C one and C two allowable area. And then there is, um, C two district, sorry, is in the second paragraph. But I converted it to a table. That may have gone a bit far. And this is essentially an expression of that table. So in the primary frontage, it's one square foot per lineal foot of frontage. And then on the secondary frontage, it's a half square foot per lineal foot of frontage. And the minimum, or sorry, the maximum size is a hundred square feet in both the C one and C three and two hundred square feet in the C one, C two. So you have the zoning columns here and then you have primary frontage and secondary frontage. And then the next paragraph or the next table shows you how many signs you can have in those zones. So here's the paragraph. You can have one freestanding sign, may be located on either frontage. And freestanding in a business complex, you can have up to two. And that is one on each frontage. You can't have them both on the same front. So this seems like, it seems a little easier and save us a bunch of verbiage. But if you wanna take a look at that and, and give me that direction tonight, you can or you can let me know by the next planning commission and I can make those changes for you.
I like tables.
Yeah, so do I.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, if, I don't know that you need to include it in the packet, but if you would maybe email me a track changes.
Yep. You want, I can email you all of them in Word. That way, if you, if you have Word, you can, and do it. But in the staff report, generally, they're produced, they're put on the, online as PDFs, so it's not very helpful. Does, it, also, is it helpful that you have the comment boxes off to the right so you can kind of follow Maylene's comments and my counter comments and as we continue to talk internally?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Because traditionally, I had tried and done this, I used to try and do this in an Excel spreadsheet and I would have columns with, with comments off to the side. And while it was helpful for me to be organized, I felt it kinda lost something in the translation, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Uh, and I think that's, um, and then the other thing that I had, that I had thought about is there are clear code sections which are repeated, like for example, the safe vision. There's safe vision language in the commercial zone that says signs probably placed so that there's safe vision for driveways and that kind of stuff. And the way the code is organized, it says that in the residential zone and it says it in the commercial zone and it says it in the industrial. it in the commercial zone, and it says it in the industrial zone. And why have it in three places when you can just put all signs in the... ...but not blinking and flashing? They shall be, um, not placed in dangerous locations so that they block vision. So I could, I didn't do this in the version that I gave you, but I've identified multiple sections where we keep repeating that. So I would replace those paragraphs with a comment that says illumination shall be in accordance with the general requirement section. So it'll be a cross-reference rather than paragraph after paragraph repeated from section to section.
Yeah, that seems cleaner to me. Makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, then I think that's the end of my, oh, so there are some, some, some additional sign conversations that I think, um, you need to be prepared for. First one is sign definitions. Do we want to keep definitions that include content even though we don't regulate it? And so the best example is real estate signs. Everybody knows what they are. You can see a property for sale, a property for lease. Even though we don't regulate it as a real estate sign, the actual definition says real estate signs are temporary signs that are on properties that are for sale. Now, the temporary sign section specifically says, if you have a property for sale, lease, or, um, in development, you can place one sign up to a certain size and a certain height, while that property is for sale. It doesn't say that it has to say for sale or under development. So you could put up a sign that says, "Buy Coors beer," but you can only have it on that property while the property is for sale. And it would be temporary because properties are only on sale for a certain amount of time before they're purchased and, and... So, um, that's one example of, um, there are some definitions which do include content, but we're not regulating by that content.
Okay.
Um, and then I think we're going to want to make sure that we spend some time focusing specifically on temporary signs because it is kind of a big issue, and it's something that you want to make sure that you get right the first time because we don't want to let those fall through a crack because they are regulated. We can't regulate them based on content, so we need to make sure that you understand how they are regulated so that when Maileen and I start regulating them, you get the result that you expect. Um, and then the other one is signs that are visible from offsite, or internal signs. So for example, if you're familiar with the Red Canoe site, or the Taco Bell site up there by Walmart, when you pull in, there is a handicap parking sign, but you can't see it from the street. There's also a menu board, but you can't see it from the street. There's also an ATM sign that points to where the ATM driveway is, but you can't see it from offsite. So we're either going to need to create some elaborate regulations which limit or box in how many signs you can have onsite, or you can talk about internal signs which don't need to be regulated. So for example, if there's, um, safety and security signs that you need to put up on the property because there's hazardous material, no smoking within 50 feet, those are required by law, safety requirements. But if we're going to limit how many signs can be put up internally, you might have back hoes backing over customers because they're in areas that are unsigned. So, um, that's going to be an issue that it seems uncomfortable to not regulate, but it might be a reality of, it's just the way signage works now. So, um, I think we'll need to spend some time on that. And then the other example is exemption of signs required by law. So safety warning in critical areas, this is a wetland buffer, do not enter. That's the kind of signage that typically is, um, exempt from sign regulations. So I don't know whether you want to start on this tonight, or maybe have some time to dive into it with this kind of primer.
Um, I think, first thing, I'm thinking some extra time and maybe would hope to have more of the commission here before we jump too far into it. But I will defer to strong opinions, the contrary.
No. No, that make, that makes sense, yeah, because they should hear whatever.
Okay. I would, I guess, request that we all be considering these things, kind of ruminating on them until the next meeting so we can hit the ground running, um, and not need too much review. Uh, if you need any more direction, you said divide up workload for next meeting, is that something?
Do you have any?
Sorry. Do you have any preference of what you would like to tackle first? Or do you maybe want to start at the beginning? Or do you want me to cut down the low-hanging fruit, like the process and the application submittal? Or do you want to leave that to the end so that if you run out of time, it's like, yeah, staff is going to do what it's going to do? The process section is pretty simple because we basically require an application to be submitted and drawings for what it looks like. We can spend 20 minutes arguing about how many copies we need, or you can just leave it to staff to do that kind of stuff and don't waste your time on it, put it at the end, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hard stuff first, right?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
So these are the four things I thought you might be, want to focus on. Any, any order look good to you?
I think that order seems, seems good, kind of.
Maybe temporary signs first. Temporary signs first.
Does temporary signs seem like the, that might be the thorniest?
Uh, I don't know. It depends, right?
I guess so.
One thing I could do is, maybe what I should do is prepare a, like a mini staff report for each one of these, and maybe try and compartmentalize the temporary sign discussion and do a quick staff report that would allow you to kind of focus on those sections. And then, uh, internal signs not visible.
Okay.
As the second one. And then exemptions kind of third, and the sign definitions should be pretty quick, so it may not be significant. But maybe smaller staff reports might help you get your arms around each subject. And then at the final, those four together and make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. All right. Any, any more questions for staff before we move on? Uh, I see us, we have a staff reports item on the agenda. Anything else?
That was the opportunity to add the PowerPoint presentation for this people at home who wanted to take a look at it.
Okay. All right. Fantastic. In that case, I think we're through. Uh, any, any other business before we adjourn?
No.
No? All right. I'm going to close this meeting of the planning commission. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you being here, taking time. I brought some donuts. I wanted to get here in time to spread them out. Uh, I did not, but don't be shy. And again, I, I appreciate you bearing with me on my targets.
I was going to, if you're right, you may have them.
Anybody named Leroy?
Uh, I don't know.
For some, I would hope it's, he's not able to contact you, but any questions or some questions?